All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen to our September twenty first council meeting. It was enjoyable to see you in council chambers for at least two or three meetings. Uh but unfortunately, due to the situation in Alberta, particularly locally, uh council has decided to go back to virtual meetings to ensure the health and safety of uh our staff as well as ourselves. Um so with that, I will call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion, please? That uh the agenda for the September twenty first, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented. Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, of the minutes of the September seventh, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. We have no public hearings, no delegations, no reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council approve a five hundred thousand dollar increase to the wastewater treatment plant outfall pipe replacement project? To be funded by a transfer of two hundred thousand dollars from the infrastructure reserve and three hundred thousand dollars from the de-gas wellhouse project budget. Counselor Bevan will make that motion and we will hand things over to C O Beverage and our interim general manager of uh planning and infrastructure, Pat Fisher, to give us an update on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Pat Fisher will be introducing this item and I'll be adding any information that's required. Thank you.
I'm just gonna share my screen, if that's okay. This is working. Can you all see this?
Yes, we can, Pat.
Perfect. And we're just gonna move this to full screen. Everything's showing up okay?
Yes.
Awesome. So uh to start off, um just so we're all aware, the outfall is located east of the wastewater treatment plant site at the McLeod River. Uh it was originally constructed in nineteen eighty. It's made out of plastic pipe. There's a steep hill just before the river. We've got a manhole at the top and a manhole at the bottom. Um and then a an actual outfall structure that discharges treated affluent into the McLeod River. In mid twenty twenty, we had a an incident where um overflow was observed by our operations staff coming out of the top of the hill manhole. Um flow didn't dissipate and and slow down, uh so we established some temporary uh pumping. And then on further investigation, we found out that the existing pipe was damaged, so we installed some temporary piping sections in October twenty twenty to give us time to design a proper replacement. So the design was completed by Stan Tech this year um and then tendered. We did a public pre-qualification process. We received five submissions for pre-qualified contractors. All five were um approved. We received three final submissions out of the five pre-qualified contractors, Paderne's Elite Site Services and G S Construction. Uh Paderne's was low. Um and we've included a requirement that the contract would be completed by November thirtieth, twenty twenty one in that project contract. Um the total cost estimate, including all of our fees and uh other charges is one point four nine one million. Uh one point one of that is construction. We've got some design. Um we've got land and crossing agreements and then a contingency fund included in that for um total just under one point five million. Currently, we're funded for one one million dollars. That's funded from the municipal stimulus program. We have a deadline to complete the construction in that program of December thirty first, twenty twenty one. So that's where the November deadline comes in. We're requesting a funding increase of five hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars would be funded by reducing the exact existing de-gas project budget. Um and then two hundred thousand dollars would be funded from the infrastructure reserve. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for that update. Council questions? Counselor Schard?
Hi, Pat. Uh thank you for your update. It's just a question I have. Since the one part failed, do we have plans to inspect the rest of the line from the highway up to the treatment center? Just so we have an updates, we because it was all built nineteen eighty, the line's probably all old.
Oh, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, through the chair to um Counselor Schard. We have uh in our capital plan, some money set aside for sewer condition assessments. We would spend some of that to investigate sections of that um to get a an idea of what, how it's aged.
Alright, thank you. Uh council, any further questions on this? Uh so just through to Mr. Fisher, my understanding is the contractor that is being selected is has a good reputation and lots of experience with this type of work. Is that correct?
Thank you. Through to the chair. The contractor was selected based on experience and references. Um so that's part of the pre-qualification criteria. They do have experience doing similar jobs. And they were given as part of the pre-qualification process uh preliminary drawings to look at, so they understood the scope before they pre-qualified.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Uh Counselor Wilkinson? Counselor Wilkinson, you're muted.
That's I for me to be mute, but uh anyway, through the chair. Uh Pat, I'd like to thank you very much for doing a very thorough job before you got your um quotes in because really, it's interesting just to find out how fast our infrastructure money can go, but we certainly want the least amount to go as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh just one further question uh to you, Mr. Fisher. And now I lost him. Geez, Louise. We'll just move on, I guess. Uh with that, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. You got off easy. Alright, we're gonna move on to uh a motion, please, that council recognizing the requisitioning authority of the Evergreens Foundation confirm its support for the foundation strategic plan and development of new senior supportive housing in Wildwood and Victor Lake. And Counselor Wilkinson, would you like to make that motion? Alright, thank you. And uh we did have a presentation on this last week. I don't know if anybody has anything new to add. See, beverage, you have anything? No? Okay, thank you. Um I guess my only concern was, and I and I still have this concern is the staffing of this facility at Victor Lake. Um I I certainly hope, and I and I know our rep there has been um very involved in in the discussions on this uh that we that staffing would be taken care of um as well. It's a lot of money for a very small facility. So um just through to Counselor Wilkinson as the uh the rep on that for the town of Edson. Um the 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 Victor Lake facility would be after Wildwood. Is that a correct understanding?
It was, that was the way we had it lined up in our hierarchy, but then the provincial government gave us a two point five million dollar grant that had to be spent on that project and in a timeframe. So Victor Lake will come ahead of Wildwood.
Okay. Alright, thank you for that. Uh any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Meeting schedule review. Can I get a motion, please, that council accept administration's report as information? Counselor Sorenson will make that motion. C O Beverage, uh would you like to take this one away?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I do have the pleasure of of introducing our legislative coordinator, uh Mr. Lucas uh to present this item for council. Um a surface level review was done um with regards to our legislative processes. And this report is for simply for informational purposes at this at this moment as the uh change would be presented at the organizational meeting on October twenty sixth. So with that, I will allow uh Mr. Lucas to um start his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O Beverage. So uh much of the information is is contained in in the R F D, but I'll provide a quick synopsis here. So the aim of administration in conducting this analysis and bringing forward this report for council's consideration was to promote uh two core values. The first was the uh maximally effective use of taxpayer dollars through the reduction of duplicative and at times unnecessary meetings. Um the goal here obviously is to ensure that neither administration nor council um dedicate time and resources to meetings which might be superfluous or or unnecessary and that administration has full time to um bring forward uh comprehensive and considered reports for council. Um a secondary aim uh or a secondary value to be promoted here potentially would be um a transparency related value that is um promoting public understanding of council meetings by shifting some of the debate that currently skews very heavily towards committee meetings um towards the council meeting forum. Um however, we of course also wanted to ensure that this was in alignment with municipal best practices. So we reviewed the meeting schedules of Alberden towns that were within two thousand of the population of Edson uh for a total of eighteen communities in our sample. Um this also included Yellowhead County as a regional partner. So the most common meeting schedule uncovered was um uh was adhered to by forty one percent of the sample, and that was two council meetings and one committee meeting per month. Um the vast majority, eighty-three percent of communities surveyed, hold three or fewer total meetings per month. And only three of the eighteen communities surveyed hold four or more meetings per month in the way that uh Edson currently holds four meetings per month. Um so the the suggestion as outlined in the R F D which it would be the intention of administration administration to bring forward at the October twenty six organizational meeting is thus in alignment both with industry norms and it's consistent with um the aims of our internal review. Uh moreover, council would of course retain the flexibility and uh the flexibility to govern its schedule as it could continue to decide to hold additional meetings as needed. Um the recommendation brought forward at this time, as mentioned by C A O Beverage, um is simply to accept uh administration's report as information and a final decision could then be made at the organizational meeting of council on October on October twenty sixth. Uh thank you very much for your attention and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Alright, thank you very much for that presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor Bevan?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. I have no objection to this here. I know that uh sometimes we come to our meetings and that and we're done probably seven thirty, maybe even a little bit sooner than that. I guess the only question is um if we go down to these three meetings, if we get a lot for one of our committee of whole meetings, then we could be running that uh a later date than that. If that's okay with everybody else, and that I have no problem doing that. But I like the idea of going down to three and that because it does get repetitive after a while and there's really nothing to discuss. We discuss everything. We come to our council meetings. Everything's already discussed and uh then we move on. I I think this would be more of a a fair way of doing it. So I do agree with us moving down here. And like was said, if we need to call an extra meeting, we can always call an extra meeting that and we can give a heads up notice to everybody that needs to be there. So I have no problem with this.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Bevan. Counselor Wilkinson?
I'm unmuted. Good. Uh when you did this extensive survey, did you also survey as to what times they had their council meetings?
Thank you. Through the chair. Um unfortunately, I did not record that information. Um so I I could I could aggregate it at some point, but I don't have it on me at this moment. My apologies.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Schard?
Um like I'm listening what you guys are saying, but I guess to look at, if we go to three meetings, we're all paid by the month. So does that mean there's gonna be a cost savings to the taxpayers? So I mean, the four meetings, I agree that sometime they're very short meetings. But when I look at the taxpayers' pays, we're all paid by the month and most staff attending the meetings are paid by the month. So unless it's a cost savings, I guess we'll find out on organizational. It's just my viewpoint on this.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Schard. Counselor Curry?
Um through the chair, thank you for bringing this word, Daniel. Um I think it's really interesting. Um and I'm excited to see what uh is decided at the organizational meeting. Um I agree. I think too often, most of our conversation happens at the committee meetings. And then people sign in to see the council meetings and they um they might sometimes think we don't have a lot of discussion about things before we uh vote on things. And that's uh definitely not true. So I think as far as for me transparency, I would like to see more of that conversation happen at the council meeting um and just to spread that out. So I think it's a great idea. And to Counselor Schard's um comment, I totally disagree with you because it would be the same amount of time. So all we would be doing is extending what is already shorter are shorter meetings. So we would just be not taking that time where somebody's coming in. We have had meetings that have gone on for twelve minutes. Um and so to me, this is would be the exact same amount of time of hours that counselors are spending and admin is spending there. It's just not spread out over four days. And so to me, that's just efficiency. Um and not having people come in to sit there for seven minutes when we could just extend one meeting longer. So it's the exact amount of time.
Great, thank you. Anybody who hasn't spoken of anything new to add? Counselor Sorenson?
Thank you. Through the chair. Uh thank you very much, uh Daniel. Uh I really appreciate the information and the work that went into this report. Um while I do agree that it would be, we we could um combine or we don't need to discuss items twice for for a lot of different uh issues. We could discuss it on the same night that we are voting on it. Um so I I do think we can do better in that respect. However, uh we, in my opinion, we have a ton of work to do in this community. Uh if you look at our strategic planning matrix, it's full of issues that need to be discussed. And I know administration is uh is um is sometimes the the thing holding back certain items. However, there are items where the council just needs to dig its teeth into and have a a really lengthy discussion on uh for down downtown revitalization. Um there's a variety of uh topics that we could really uh spend a cup, an hour or two on. And right now, those things are being uh pushed to our strategic planning sessions once a year. While those are great, I think uh too much emphasis is placed on that once a year meeting. And uh if if we could spare one or convert one meeting a month, I would recommend we uh pick a topic and uh have council really hash out what they would like to see strategically for that item. And I could be argued one way or another if it should be live streamed, but um I I think there's just too much work to be done in this community to uh sit back and and reduce our meetings to three times a month. Thank you.
I thank you, Counselor Sorenson. C O Beverage, you want to respond to that?
I may. Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Counselor Sorenson. Uh I think one of the aspects when it comes to um the items that are going to committee of the whole uh meetings, we typically are seeing the same um items going to both meetings. And um when in reviewing the processes, um typically, it's it's plans, policies, bylaws, very, you know, the high level, as you mentioned, that's the items that we need to spend our time at at committee of the whole and rather than every item going to both meetings, if you will. So you'll just notice if this were to be approved, it would just be, it's not less work in a sense. And and some of that um is to allow um administration to to do the work to bring the plans forward um as well. So there it kind of plays in there as well. So I mean, I think that there's always an opportunity to to schedule more meetings, et cetera. Um but it's just a a matter of of where we're spending our time as well. So um and then also making sure that um that there are reports are um meaningful and and worthy of council's consideration in some instances as well. So um there's there's some of that uh that we can maybe offer um as far as some of our efficiencies.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Uh through the chair to um Ms. Beverage um or uh Mr. Lukac. Uh so what Counselor Curry had mentioned with that, you know, occasionally we'll have a meeting that is twelve minutes. It's often the council meeting, not the committee of the whole meeting. So by reducing a committee of the whole meeting, then is it jamming pack the other committee of the whole meeting um to a longer length? Because those ones have been at three hours before or longer um or a two and a half hour mark. So to extend that to, you know, a five or six hour meeting doesn't seem practical either. Um or are we going to be having um more discussion that we're not making a decision on during a council meeting? Um I know for myself, sometimes I like I like that week to be able to think about it and to uh talk to residents about it as well. So um I don't mind having the discussion at a council meeting um and and then delaying it for another week if if that's what it takes to make a decision. But I don't know if I find additional value from my perspective um to uh find out about, you know, gather the information during the council meeting and then have to think about it and ponder it and consider all the information that others put into it as well and then make a decision on it without any additional input um from the public. So like I I feel that that's that's how it's being brought forward and I just kind of want some clarity on that, if you don't mind.
C O Beverage, go ahead.
Well, certainly, and and uh through the through the merit to Counselor Byer. Um most definitely that I can understand uh your perspective for sure. I guess when it when a person the the information that we wanted to gather um and even if we were to expand the um information or the the uh survey out to um communities three times our size, that's really the structure that they that there are, you know, when you talk about business and and the amount of business that that needs to be done. I guess the the, you know, this is a great example. This item I brought forward as a information item at a council meeting. It could have been brought to a committee mealful meeting, but I just brought it as information. So there's nothing preventing from that. And that's a fairly typical process. So I I do offer that opportunity as 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 well, that there would be items potentially that would come for information, would allow the time that you need to be able to bring forward for a recommendation. And I think it's what it what we're doing is we're really trying to be um mindful of what we're bringing forward, how we're bringing it forward and allowing for the time for the decision makers, this council, to um evaluate it. So um I think that there's always opportunity to also to table an item if if council, it feels that there's more information that is uh required. So um this was just brought forward as as an alternative uh to the continuous um, you know, looking at the fact that our meetings are quite short. Um and um looking at, you know, some governance practices for just finding um some ways to um allow for a little bit more time, like I said, to work on some of those strategic areas that we we have been tasked with. So thank you.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Byer. And I do see your hand there, Counselor Schard, but I haven't spoken yet. So I'm just gonna uh say that I do support uh this uh for a couple of different reasons. Uh one piece is the transparency piece. People will watch committee or council meetings, but they may not would watch the committee of the whole meetings. And this will ensure that all that information is provided at those council meetings. We have numerous opportunities uh to, as was mentioned, table items, accept them for information before they are formally adopted. Um and also that would give uh clearer direction to administration uh on on some of those items. Um just meaning more does not present more value for the municipality. In fact, uh there's a lot of duplication and wasted time on administration's point, bringing things forward over and over and over again, which is just not necessary. And it's also takes up all of our time in which I think that to Counselor Sorenson's point, uh that would allow us to have an additional day if there is something that we need to delve into, like we have in the past on downtown revitalization, economic development, mental health, addiction, support, any of those those topics where we really need to, you know, dig down and and get deep into that. We can do so with administration. Uh because now all of a sudden, we do have an additional day to do that each month. So um I'm in support of it. I think it's a complete waste of everybody's time when we uh on Zoom, it's a lot easier, but when we all have to get dressed, go down and uh for a five, ten minute meeting uh and then go home, it's it really is a waste of everybody's time. Um and we have lots of opportunities to extend meetings as well as needed or add uh meetings as required as well. So um this council has met a lot more um over the last four years uh than I ever remembered when I was on council in the past just because of the the various issues that we've been dealing with. So um that's my perspective. Uh Counselor Schard?
Yes, I just have two comments to add. One of them, it was already spoken about. Um I agree when people we go to council meetings, we we need to encourage people to watch committee of the holes. But what we've forgotten here, when we changed to committees, we used to have boards, engineering and planning, directive serve, you know, all the other boards. So cutting out committee of the hall, and I mean, some of it's due to COVID, whatever the story is, but I think at committee meetings, we need to bring in updates of the other boards that we no longer have. We've forgotten that we brought them in to committee of the hall and got rid of some of the other boards. So that's why I wouldn't want to see them shortened up. Uh the other thing is, and I believe it's already been mentioned, during committee of the hall, we have a chance to uh debate a lot of the issues and, you know, the studs brought forward. So I agree. Once we get to council, the public says, well, you guys just voted on it. Then I remind them, did you watch the committee of the hall? Because a committee of the hall, they may sometime go up to four hours and other times are only fifteen minutes. It depends on the issue. So that's the reason that I would be against cutting back committee of the hall. We need to discuss some of our other issues that are on, you know, uh get updates from other people.
Alright, anybody else have anything new to add? Uh Counselor Wilkinson?
I uh through the chair, I agree with you, Troy. There's far too many topics that we aren't getting discussed. And I don't want to go to a meeting just to go to a meeting. I want to go to a meeting that has some teeth in it. And I think there's lots of things that could be brought forward. I like it brought forward so that we do have time to research, as you said, Council Byer, check out with the community what's interesting to them before we discuss and vote. And um I guess we could have statistics brought to us on how many people do watch committee of the whole and how many watch council. Because the people I know do watch both, so they hear the discussion and then they hear the vote. And again, I just also would really like to have statistics on how many times we've been in camera. Uh it just seems far too many, as far as I'm concerned. We are hired by the people and our decision should be made in front of them. Thank you.
Uh to Counselor Wilkinson's point, all decisions are made in public. So I resent that comment. Um there are things that are uh under in in camera items that must be in camera according to municipal government act. And any decisions that are made are always made in public.
Oh, I agree that a final decision is made in public, but I think at times the council needs to know why that decision has been made. Not the council, but the public has to know why that decision was made.
Alright, anybody else? With that, I will call the question. We are accepting this for information. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council cancel the regularly scheduled October nineteenth, twenty twenty one council meeting? Uh Counselor Byer will make that motion. Uh C O Beverage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh this item uh was to be included in the last uh council meeting essentially uh following the election on October eighteenth, um having a council meeting the next day. Uh the council members are not sworn in until October twenty sixth, and therefore uh having the meeting uh with no orientation, nor no uh swearing in ceremony, et cetera, was a uh was a miss. So uh thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Uh we have no information items, no sundry items, council committee reports. We're going back to September the eighth. And today, we will start with Counselor Wilkinson.
Alright, on September eighth, I had a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management meeting where we are still working on a regionalization plan and have high hopes to get that implemented. On the tenth, I had a F C S S A Zoom meeting and uh on the sixteenth, Evergreens meeting.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Schard.
Hmm I'm just um on September fourteenth, we have the whole and then emergency management meeting. And I had a synergy meeting, but I'm can't find the date of it. And I can't remember if it was before or after, but I did attend the synergy. There was updates from oil companies, Husky and other ones that they're gonna start a drilling program. They're excited about. We had an update from uh Midwest Pipeline that they're carrying on. They're still running at about third capacity. And what was the other highlight? That was the three highlights that stuck in my mind that they were excited. They were finally drilling after a council drilling program for the last sixteen months. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Counselor Byer.
Thanks. I had uh the committee of the whole meeting on September fourteenth. On September fifteenth, I had an Edson library board meeting and uh like uh the town of Edson, we've had to make some adjustments. Um they already implemented um mask wearing uh prior to um all the other announcements, but um they've reduced to a third of the capacity um in lieu of the restrictions exemption program um and until there's um a a bit more leeway or ability for people who don't have phones um and the ability to kind of print off all these passport like information um to access the library. So reducing it to a third uh made more sense um to 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 keep the bear, keep it barrier free. And um on September uh sixteenth, I had the Emergency Management Advisory Committee meeting and uh earlier this evening. And earlier this evening, the 21st, I had a youth council, I guess, an application review meeting where we kind of went over the youth councils and Krista will be contacting those that are, that were chosen for, for the youth council. That's everything.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Sorenson.
All right. Through the chair, yeah, September 8th, I was at the Edson District Chamber of Commerce. And a bunch of, a bunch of reports there. They partnered with Rotary Club of Edson for the Rotary Main Street Jamboree back in the summer. And they reported just over, over $8,000 in profits. So that's great for them. They also received a federal grant for shop, for promoting shop local. So they're gonna have a variety of promotions or advertisements and marketing in town to promote shopping local. They had an end of summer movie event sponsored by the Edson Credit Union. They have art on main. That was great. September 16th. They had the federal forum, as well, they're going to be having the municipal forum on September 27th. And the business awards on October 21st. I think I covered all the main things. That same day, I had a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority meeting. And like Counsel Wilkinson said, all four communities, Edson, Hinton, Yellowhead County, and Jasper have all endorsed moving towards a commission. Now the, the, the hangup is just coming up with the correct wording for motions and making sure we have all the, basically have agreement in principle and moving forward that way. September 14th, committee of the hall. And then today, earlier today, we had youth council application reviews. I'll leave it at that. A ton of applicants, so very encouraging. It's gonna be another great year with youth council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Bevan.
On September the 9th, we had an ESTS meeting. It went very well. New board is hard at work here and that. They're down to reviewing their bylaws right now and director's liability, looking at funding and applying for funding. And they're going through the town of Edson. They're gonna apply through them and let the town do it because the town can get 100% of the funding for them. If they were to do it on their own, the transportation seniors would only get 80% of it. So they're working closely with the town on this funding and that. Looking at getting a lift fixed on their bus. They have to have that. And a bus that was run into is gonna be repaired. So they're doing well. Lots of calls. The seniors are really loving it and they're picking up other people at, with that too. And also on the night for Counsel Schard, that's when the meeting was, the Yellowhead Synergy meeting was on the 9th. 14th committed a whole meeting and the 16th emergency management meeting. And that's in my report.
Thank you, Counsel Curry.
Thank you. I just had the COW meeting on September 14th and the emergency management meeting on the 16th.
All right. Thank you. On September 10th, I met with the mayor of Slave Lake here in Edson to tour shelter pods as they are very entrusted in that project. September 14th, committee of the hall meeting, emergency management advisory committee meeting on the 16th. CEO Beverage and I attended a virtual call with Premier Minister Kyver and the Chief Medical Officer of Health on September the 17th, talk about the new restrictions. And today, we had the youth council application review and we had just a huge amount of applicants. So unfortunately, some will not be on youth council this year. But just an amazing amount of response to that. So looking forward to seeing the new, new youth council in action. Anybody else have anything new? If not, we have no financial items. Questions from media and public regarding items from this council meeting. Mr. Beth G. I see Adrian has no question.
Do you have two members of the, of the media in attendance? If they have any questions, they can raise their hand. I'm seeing nothing at this time.
All right. I'll give it one more second here. Media, do you have any other questions? Seeing none, I will call the question for a motion to go in camera. Counsel Bevan will make that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, for adjournment? Counsel Schard, all those in favor? Have read it, everyone.